Go ahead, call meeting order.
United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up on our agenda tonight is the rezone request for the Redland addition and Rentka addition.
Well, I would say, here's the situation, you're you're and you're here on behalf of the petitioners, correct? And correct me if I, if I'm incorrect about this, but this is on a petition for amendment to the zoning map, actually, it's often called a rezoning, seeking to have two parcels that are southwest of Bass Lake rezoned from R2, which is a residential zone to Ag. And the apparent purpose of both of them, the Rentka and the Redland petitions are to allow for solar panel installation, but that being because the parcel's current use is said to be agricultural, even though it's zoned residential, that's not a violation of the residential rules in Stark County. But it would require additional procedures to do a solar installation, whereas it doesn't connect, so. What we have are two petitions that I think comply with the statute, they're signed by the owners, are they not?
They are.
And they both seek this rezoning, both of them are marked as approved by the after a public hearing of the planning commission dated September 13th, 2021, I believe. And both packets include certifications of the notices that were given to interested landowners in the vicinity. They're quite similar in all these respects, in both cases, they specifically limit the rezoning or remap map amendment request to the properties that are south and west of US 35, although as their attorney points out, probably a better way to say that from a legal point of view is to exclude those that are north and east of that road. And one thing I would note is that in, according to past procedures in Stark County, while the statute says technically that it gives different things that the planning commission can do, one of them is a favorable recommendation, this is an approval. And it's always been treated that an approval by the planning commission here is treated as a favorable recommendation. Now, once it comes up, you have several things you can do. It's supposed to come up at the first regular meeting after the, it came up before the planning commission, I believe it did that, correct? So we're in compliance with the statute on that. Now.
The only clarification is that the Redland parcel, the LB and the Rentka is R2.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So it's both.
Okay, so that's, that could be why I was confused about that, so yeah, they are, they're, in both cases, the result would be that additional proceedings would be required, in fact, that's right, so if you look at page one of the of the Redland additions, that shows that it's currently local business, which is kind of commercial. So you have the following things that you can do. You can adopt the proposal which makes, which causes it to take effect immediately, you can reject either, you know, you can do the separate reports to the proposal and it would be defeated. And if you don't act within 90 days, it's considered passed by, you know, by not objecting to it. Now, it doesn't say this specifically, but yeah, obviously you could reject one and send it back for additional procedures if you wanted to do that as well. Now, sir, do you have anything you'd like to add to that?
Sure. This request is a small addition to the overall project, both parcels, both sections are contiguous to existing farms that are going to be a part of the project. The plan's already made review, the Rentka parcel, it's about 14 acres surrounded by parcels in the project, and the Redland is about 85 acres south and west of 35 from the beginning, we've talked about keeping it, the project away from the lake, this rezon keeps it south of 35 and west of it as discussed, as well as retains the existing zoning, usually for future development should that occur. The parcels are all currently used for ag production, not developed in any kind of business or residential use and it probably won't, at least as long as current ownership lasts. So the request is that these few parcels be rezoned, be added to the solar project, which does have the recommendation of support at Stark County, that you cannot develop a commission. Do you have any answer, any specific questions?
And one thing I could add before, this isn't, there's already been a hearing on this, this is actually a hearing, you're free to take comments from the public, but you don't really have to.
I'd like to, if there's anyone that would like to start.
I'd like to start.
Can you say your name, please?
My name is Jill Pinty, I'm a longtime resident of Bass Lake this generation, and also a business owner. And I had submitted a letter, our company's DEJ Enterprises LLC, where we had dropped a letter off at the planning commission on September 23rd. It was sent over by Pam in the office, I'd like to read this letter out loud if you don't mind.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, dear Stark County Commissioners, please accept this letter as our formal opposition and protest to the approval of the rezoning of the land for the installation of solar farms and solar farm equipment for the property located on approximately 14 acres owned by the Rentka family in the area of 6535 south and 450 east and approximately 100 acres in the area of 450 CRS and north of 35, US 35, Stark and Stark County, Indiana. DEJ Enterprises LLC is the owner of the adjacent land, 4968 ECR 210, and I stated our pin numbers, I don't need to read that out, and the 4.6 acre parcel with the pond to the west. We did not receive notification of the meeting held on September 13th, 2021 concerning the approval of the rezoning of these parcels. As an adjacent property owner, proposed project that requires rezoning, we should receive written notification of the public hearing as required by law. If we had received written notification of the public meeting, we would have been present to voice our oppositions and protest to the project. The development of the solar project will directly impact our plan to operate a commercial business. We purchased our property with the knowledge that these parcels were zoned for local business. If the 114 acres are rezoned agricultural, our property will be significantly devalued from the plans to develop our business to do that, it should be impacted. DEJ is in the process of planning a beautiful landscape diocesan project that would be marketed and operated as a venue for formal weddings and special occasions. Our beautiful venue will increase property values in Stark County and encourage further development of commercial businesses to bring in revenue, sustainable jobs, and tax revenue for Stark County. On-site solar panels and equipment will keep our ability to successfully develop our market and market our venue. Furthermore, the property, the proposed solar project will detrimentally affect our ability to obtain the funding to develop the venue. The on-site make potentially noisy solar project will be seen from our properties, we have direct view of US 35 and CR 210. As a matter of fact, it is our understanding that Reynolds Park also did not receive notification and were unaware of this meeting. Given there were no residents or business owners in attendance at the meeting, we believe many were not notified. We would like to schedule a meeting with the commissioners to share our plans and further discuss the impact, the rezoning of these areas. I left my phone number and all of our names as partners.
Where, where do you plan to put this venue?
Right across the street from the marina, there is the old Redland Farm House, the old barn and, you know, the grain silos. We purchased that parcel
Okay.
as well as the parcel to the
What?
west of that with the pond, and it's about 4.9 acres.
But this is not on this list?
Well, it, it's in the, it's in the neighborhood, but it isn't actually adjacent to any parcel that I can see, I mean, I'm seeing, I'm seeing the parcel that is marked, we're talking about the one that's actually titled in DEJ, right? It's on, it's on 210 and it's on, it's on that sort of a hill there with some trees and stuff, right?
Right, and then the property next to it with the pond.
Right.
It was, but this, this area north of east of 35.
It's, yeah.
Is not included in this request.
No, it's not, it might be a little confusing, but that, that parcel by Redlands, that's a part of the Redland property is straight west of their property essentially, and also fronts on both the 210 and Highway 35, but the portion that's north of 35 and east, north and east of 35, is not included in the proposal. Is that's correct, is that not?
That is correct.
Yes.
I would also note that not only were the parcels that were adjacent certified, also all the parcels along the north were also sent certified mailing, you got the exhaustive list of evidence for that. But I'd also like to point back to the existing ordinance and the extensive buffering requirements that need to be placed along the road. Like given this potential siding, south and west of 35 along the Evergreen landscaping along 35, a project along the way would be done.
True.
We just wanted to say that I had some dealings with Stark LLC the other day, and they said that, and this might be causing some of the confusion, that what was ever listed on the radio was actually the wrong location, and so that may be causing some of this confusion, it's not going to butt up on those properties, according to them. Last vote on that.
My name is Julie Ferris, M A R U S, I live on 700 South, and my entire property is going to be surrounded by solar panels, and nobody told us.
We got no letter, no anything.
That's probably true, because that's in an agricultural zone, and it doesn't require any special, this is for rezoning, there's probably no rezoning required there.
Yeah, for three zone, it has to be in.
It would go through this procedure, but, but that's under the zoning rules in Stark County, you know, the panels are allowed in ag zones without any special permission.
But you're gonna decrease my property value. And nobody thought that that was important? Literally, my entire house will be surrounded.
I mean.
Across the street, south, north, east, west, the entire thing is surrounded.
A lot of the property owners that are, that are wanting the solar farm, they live in Plastec County, they own the land up here adjacent to my property. I lived there, I lived there for 16 years. I chose to live out there because we wanted to be away and, you know, in a nice area and not have a lot of people around, which is fantastic, except now. You know, my, my property, my, my barn's there, my, my home's there, I'm gonna have a 10 foot tall, looks like prison wire fence surrounding my property on three sides. And we've gotten, and the only notice we got was
From one of the farmers.
One of the farmer who owns the land that connects to mine.
And the next day, we were being surveyed.
So he stopped by and gave us a little courtesy, but that's it. You bring the solar panels in, you make a little money, but you're gonna, there's, there's other parts to just the money, it's the quality of life, and also property values for the people that have been here for the last, I've lived in Stark County for 30 years.
Well, I've been here all my life.
I have been there.
I think, you know, it's kind of a the areas that are zoned ag already, I mean, that's kind of out of our hand, I mean, it's private deals, this is all private. I guess that's all private, I mean, it's, it's not, it's not really, I mean, county government can only regulate.
So what I like hearing is, because I, I've heard both sides of it now. On one side, it's going to decrease property values, on the other side, the ones that are for it, say it's going to increase property values. Do we have any idea, any projections on what this is actually going to do to property values, any, anything at least quantitative? I'm sorry, what question? I'm sorry. I hear the main concerns about this is how it might affect property values.
Right.
Is there, do you have any speculation, at least numerically, on how?
Well, I, I haven't seen that, but obviously, here's the thing, you know, the people that own the land that they're going on favor it, and sometimes people that are next to it don't favor it.
Right.
And that's kind of the rub, right?
Right.
And, you know, but, but the question that, you know, that they're asking, unfortunately, you know, today, this is not really in front of you.
Right.
That, that's the zoning issue, and it's within the zoning rules to put a solar project on ag land in Stark County, it doesn't require any special permission.
Does anybody know where this money's coming from? I mean, really, that's, that's a question I'd like to know, where, where's the, where's the money coming behind the solar company, where's that coming from? Yeah, I, I had heard it was foreign money, and I was just, was hoping that I could get some confirmation on that.
I have a couple of questions too. Going back to the following, would this really be an agricultural use? I mean, wouldn't it be a industrial, I mean, it's a power plant, I don't, I haven't read, but I mean, how would that be considered an agricultural use? And another, I mean, again, okay, I'm, I'm the third generation of five generations. I've lived at our house now for 70, 72 years, and I have concerns about fires. Now, if there would ever be a lightning strike, because it's metal and we have lightning and it's out in the field, I mean, you know, then that would start a fire, and that would be a battery, electrical fire. Now, does the fire department, do they have special chemicals to put this out, from what I understand, with an electrical fire, they just simply let them burn out. And there's fumes, so I know that there was, you might have heard, I tried to look for a comparison quickly. Morris, Illinois, there was a battery fire and they could not put them out, so what they had to do is they had to pour concrete over this building that contains, contains batteries because of the fumes. There was five miles, a five mile radius that people were evacuated, is there an evacuation plan, is there evacuation route, does the fire department?
As I understand, yeah, that's, I was just, there's, this system doesn't have batteries.
It does not have batteries.
It dumps all its power directly onto the grid, as, as what has been presented to me.
Their distribution center for that kind of power, there's gonna have to be.
Yeah.
Exactly.
There's gonna be an inverse.
Like Nipco would have, you see them all chained around the fence.
Exactly, everywhere.
You would, yeah, you would, that would, that would have to be somewhere near, you would think, the panels.
David, I, I think the firefighter, fighter, you want to?
Yeah, well, we brought that up too, but I, you know, the one thing is, is I think that, I don't know, this is like, the meeting was scheduled to have like a open venue for this. But I, but Stark LLC knows that they need to do that, so I think we do need to have like, and obviously he'll express it to you, but I'll tell him that, you know, that that's, these things are coming up. But like, there was a lot of planning that went into this, and there was a lot of discussion about fire, you're right, what they do is they let them burn.
Yeah.
But the vegetation is gonna be there, what they call pollinator friendly plants, because bees are needed for corn and the other things that we have in the county, so there's gonna be a benefit there, but the panels that they're putting in, in this project are panels that tilt. And so what happens is, if there's a fire, which the fires are rare, but if there's a fire, what they do is they level the panels out, and for the most part, the panels burn. There are no special chemicals, because the kind of, the panels themselves don't be, become involved in the fire itself. But they can be damaged by the fire, and then those would be repaired, but generally, the fire departments, three fire departments are gonna be involved in this. It's already planned, that there's a whole training phase, and there's gonna be operations that support that, if, if it does happen, but for the most part, there won't be a lot of involvement in, in what happens with that. What I will say too, is that in the process of this, of them wanting to be good neighbors and, you know, being good neighbors, we went through this when we put the jail up. We had people that came in and said that it was gonna kill their property values. Nobody could produce a study that shows that, that it kills the property values, in fact, jail as a neighbor is a good neighbor, and it actually raised the property values, and, and to this date, we put a jail there and none of the property values have gone backwards, but I think, well, hold on a second, but I think county government, we care about our residents, so I think that's something that we should ask Stark LLC to provide our studies, people are saying this in regard to their property values, give us evidence to that.
Well, if you care about the residents, this information could have gone out a long time ago, instead of hearing it on the radio.
It did actually.
It really didn't.
No, we, we actually invited people to come to public meetings about this.
I never saw a thing.
They were, it was published, you know, on the radio in different ways, but again, I am not saying that this is the forum for that, but what I am saying is the company that's involved in this is dedicated to bringing you that information, to being, being a good neighbor. And the whole thing about it being an Israeli company, a lot of energy is opened by, owned by Israeli companies, but there's a lot of local involvement that's involved in this, including the financing, I mean, it's just, they're the parent, Durrell Energy, if you wanna look them up, it's Durrell Energy. That was Mammoth LLC that was involved in Stark County, which is now Stark County LLC. But I promise you that they wanna be your neighbor. Even the part about coming up to the lake, I mean, you know, after the commissioners have spoken about that, that was one of the issues that was brought immediately to them that, you know, because we heard the same thing on the council as well, but I know what you heard was that there were gonna be panels right behind Bakery at Fingerhood, nobody wants to see that by the lake. I mean, I, I love your idea about the business that you wanna put there, because I thought that'd be a great, great place for a bed and breakfast, so, like, as a community, we know that that lake is one of our assets, we don't have a whole lot of things, you know, recreationally or whatever, so you know, I'm just saying, in support of the commissioners, but somebody that's been around this project since the beginning, there's no intention of leaving anybody out, lowering anybody's property taxes, anything like that, the, the, well, you say it did show proof of that, because there's no proof that anybody's property value has been lowered by.
There's a proof that it went up, like some people say.
Yeah, it shows.
Well, I mean, I, I think right now, if you wanna argue, all property is going up, so I mean, as far as the zoning, we have a zoning permission that is dedicated to make sure that all the required things are put in place, including where things are located, you know, how they're constructed, all those kind of things, I mean, and they're actively, they have a team of people that are working on that, and I mean, they ensure that it looks out for the neighbors.
If I, if I, if I were looking to probably, does anybody in this room think they would move next with solar farm?
No.
Yeah.
I think the discussion of our property values are the guys that have the farmland. The, the, I think it would be probably an asset to those individuals, but the people that have residences and the people that have businesses, I think my opinion, this would be an impactful, it would be a detriment. You know, I mean, so I think everybody's a little bit right in this conversation, it depends just on where you're at, if you have just teleboakers, maybe, maybe you make a little money on your land. If you're a resident or you're, or you have a business owner and you come adjacent to these solar panels, then I, I think it would be a detriment. But I am not a expert on, you know, property values and, and all those things.
I think if you visit one too, Jeff, I went, visited a couple, there's one in Kokomo, if, if it's, if anybody's ever in Kokomo, you wouldn't believe it, it's actually a pretty nice neighbor. And what it does to the surrounding areas around the farms, it's, it's pretty impressive, you know, just the way it all looks, and the other thing that I forgot to talk about too is that batteries, so you're right, Jeff, about the need, the grid doesn't always demand all the power that's there, and so it has to be distributed within the grid. Right now, these, these sites aren't gonna, they are gonna have the power capability to move it in and out, but there currently won't be batteries on site, they are battery ready installations, so.
Yeah, we did, just, yeah, David, that's one, we, we did address that issue in, in some dealings with, with the companies, that it'd be clear that, that these sites are panel arrays and not battery arrays, because the battery arrays don't really come under the rule, you know, the zoning for ag, that would be, I think, probably an industrial site. But I, it clearly those, in my opinion, those don't come under the, you know, the ag zoning that is permitted in Stark County for solar arrays. Does that make sense, you see what I'm saying, I'm not saying you agree with, you see what I'm saying, batteries are not allowed in these sites without additional zoning. The, the panels are.
So you're saying if there were batteries present, that would be considered an industrial?
Yeah, that would become an industrial, in my opinion, that would become an industrial site, right? But the, but, what's that?
But what is there, how are they?
The panels, there's panels, the panels.
The panel's gotta feed the power to somewhere, to the distribution type center.
Exactly.
From there, if you're not gonna store it in batteries, you would need some kind of kept capacitors, or you need a direct flow of power
Right.
some, somewhere.
Yeah.
That's what I don't know.
So they have, they do have, they gotta have like substations, that's right.
Substation, not batteries, but what's in a substation.
Substations are just agricultural zones now, of course, right?
They're gonna need somewhere to store this energy.
Well, they will, but, but it's not, my point is that just, the zone doesn't allow that, okay? Correct me if I'm wrong here, but just, part of this, part of the attraction of this area is because of those great big new transmission lines.
Two things, those big transmission lines and it's flat.
Okay.
And transmission line, so, because there's no batteries.
That's where, that's where all the power is going.
All goes right on.
To where?
To PJM and MISO's grid, that gets distributed throughout the state and beyond.
That part, I've looked into, and that's, I'm past the point of having questions about that, but I would like to hear from the rest of the people that came in tonight. Do you, ma'am?
Yeah, with the venue.
You have?
No, I don't have any more.
Yes, sir. I have one question. I've been in several of these meetings in the past, not necessarily for, to the pre-work meetings, and they originally talked about whether they were gonna put panels, and we told them they were too close to Bass Lake. I live at the lake, I've been out there three years living there, but I've been out here my whole life on summer. But anyway, they, they did back off, I, I, you remember that situation, it backed off. But now, my main concern is that one plot of land, land right along 210, where that, that little lake is, there's a little pond, I should say.
That's not up for approval.
Well, there's a tree, now, are you?
That piece is.
Rezone that agriculture?
No, that is not going to be rezoned tonight, that's excluded.
Will it be rezoned, here's the thing, I might not hear from you guys, okay, in the future, all right? I just wanna know, is that going to remain the way it is and not rezone agriculture in the next 10 years?
Well. I'm only guaranteed to be in office for the next three.
Okay.
So I can tell you that for the next three years, I will not be voting to rezon that particular area.
You understand my concern, because once somebody rezones agriculture, and a bunch of money is splashed in front of the owner's eyes, so we want solar panels there, well, it's agriculture, we can do whatever we want.
Yeah.
Well, through the planning commission, we, we won't leave that open for
Wonderful, I agree.
That's what we came up with through the planning commission.
Coming into this, that, yeah, because I, because I had heard the same thing a lot of you have heard, but that, and that, that particular parcel right there between 35 and 210 was a major point of contention, and granted, there hasn't been any residential development there in my lifetime.
Always been.
As will, the question becomes then, will there be residential development in that spot in the next 30 years? I didn't think there'd be bidding wars for houses in Hamlet before they were finished construction, and that's what we've got today, so yes, I would say there is a definite possibility of development in that
That would be great.
Little square.
Not sore.
But, and that's why tonight, that
keep on the other side.
That parcel is not where it's been requested.
Correct.
That's correct.
Yeah, one, one thing I, I would like to say, this is, really hits the nail on the head, because when, before all this came in, I did a lot of reading, everything I could find about how these kind of projects impacted people, and naturally, some people aren't gonna like, they have a whole bunch of them around the house, I understand that, but the, the, the key thing that I saw from, from, from communities that had had it for a while, they said they're, they're pretty good, they're pretty good neighbors as a whole, however, you don't wanna put them in a place where future development really might occur, because they get in the way of that, and so that is exactly what the board is dealing with today is, 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 you know, where to draw the line on that, because some places said, yeah, we like them, but we wish we hadn't, hadn't allowed them in this one place, because now we can't, you know, develop that area. So, yeah, I think you're all talking about exactly what the issue is, you know, it's a tough one.
Well, there has to be, there has to, you know, a line drawn, and I think 35 is a good one.
And I agree. I agree.
Well, I don't.
You want a little more on the other side?
Just so you understand, our property is forty-nine sixty-eight right there.
Yes.
And the pond next to it, right?
Yes.
So all on thirty-five, when we have this venue, it's ought to be facing out this way, and they're going to see, you know, that whole. You know, again, I'm not against development, and I'm not, you know, we're business owners too, but you know, we're, we bought that and it was all agricultural land. And, you know, if, if they're looking out and seeing solar panels, it's, 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 it's not okay to like not allow, you know.
So that woodland area there is not enough of the screens?
That's gone.
Yeah.
That's old, yeah, that's all been, the only woods that are left are. A, a tiny little. Yeah, over there behind the pond, there's maybe like a little. But that's, that's all been taken down, so that, and that's on a hill, right, so that, that, we're having, we have an elevated, um. I, you know, Ivy up there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They do.
They do?
Yes. Actually, that does prompt another question though, because with the existing MOU that's been signed with the council, was there any need to amend that with this added?
Well, it, that's a great question, it, it deals with a, uh, it, it sets a footprint. The actual, you know, they, they pay taxes primarily two ways. One, they pay full tax rate, there's no, there's no, uh, you know, there's no reduction in their real property tax.
Right.
Which, uh, is, is inevitably going to be higher than what the agricultural use was. Agricultural use land is taxed in its value in use, which is based on a productivity factor. Whereas, uh, this land is going to be based, it's going to be taxed based on a rate that's going to actually be set by the state government. There's a new statute, there's going to be a regional setting, so that will generate real property tax at the same rate. Basically, that you'll see throughout northern Indiana, isn't a fair description of.
That's correct.
And, and, but there's another way, the, the MOE, the memorandum of, of understanding with this particular project. Also includes a, uh, uh, economic development. Term, but I can't think of the letters for it, but basically they pay.
Revitalization area.
Yeah, they pay a, a tax based on the rated capacity of the facility in megawatts.
Correct.
Okay, and, um. So if the, if the facility is larger than the rated capacity in the agreement. Uh, actually, uh, this particular agreement requires that the parties come back to the table to determine what that additional. Uh, marginal amount of tax rate would be, we only have an agreement up to a projected maximum rate. That kind of escapes me at this moment, um, but. Uh, it, so if, if the footprint of this grows a lot larger, it's going to increase more of that kind of tax. Or there might not even be an incentive like that at some point, there's no guarantee that these incentives will always extend to additional projects. They might. Because we're, we're all learning about this, this is a new thing.
I have a question regards to incentives, so you're saying you're going to get X amount of dollars based on the. Current tax code, what happens if Biden's administration comes in and gives all kinds of. Discounts to these kinds of projects, which would make your.
The federal government doesn't get to impact, uh, taxes specified in states.
It is really a totally a state, look, it's a state-based thing, you know, but if, you know, you've heard the saying that, you know, nobody's life, liberty or property is safe while the legislature is in session. So this is nothing new, I mean, this goes back to that, that's, they said that in eighteenth century, right? So, you know, that's, that's sort of true, but you know, I, I don't see irresponsible operation of this with this, with the Indiana government right now. I think they're doing a pretty good job, and I, I will say that it's been a challenge, because, you know, I, I hope you don't mind me saying it, but in dealing with them. They're learning about it too, we're all learning about it, and we're trying to make sure that whatever we do. Uh, we're, we're, we're kind of limiting that, you know, to a certain footprint. So as this grows, and it may grow in our area, we'll be able to look at additional growth and make sure that we're both. You know, working with the, you know, these developers and, and also with the local community, and something that, you know, everybody's going to benefit from. It is going to generate substantial tax revenue, so yes.
I have another question, so, so I understand if property is already zoned agricultural, then. The owners of that property could just go and get a permit and not have to come for approval, correct?
That's pretty much true, yeah.
Okay, correct, so, how many acres in Stark County? Including the ones that are asking to be rezoned agricultural, I guess to set this, which makes no sense to me. And the ones that are going to pull those permits that you know of, what's the total acreage?
We're talking a couple of thousand acres.
Do you have a, your project? Yeah.
Currently submitted. Approximately five thousand.
But, but that wouldn't all be panels in that whole area, because under the agreement, some, some of it's going to be, you know, for example, under our agreement with, under our agreement with them. Uh, part of them getting the incentives is they're going to preserve existing, you know, large scale woodlands.
Woodlands, uh, any wetlands.
Wetlands, and so.
Despite the fact that they're not regulated by Indiana anymore.
Right.
Preserving those, in addition, this is not proposed like a full coverage site, like you see up west. Where there's just panels covering every square inch, we're talking, you know, approximately twenty percent or less ground coverage. Uh, grass grows throughout the sites, they're about fifteen seventeen feet between rays, I mean, there is.
And one of the goals there being that nothing's permanent in the world, and so when this, when this cycle of development runs out. That there would still be, uh, you know, Star County would look a lot like it does today. I'm, I, if people talk about being long-term Stark County residents, well, my grandfather's owned the property that, that you have now, I'd love to see it developed that way. But, um, it, uh, it, so I, I really like the way the county looks, I think it's important to, you know, maintain that, and this is, and I, I think they've been good. To work with in that regard, I would say that.
Just to clarify, the screenings required and the ordinance, uh, covers along all roadways. Uh, it's with evergreens, it's extensive, and to talk about the agricultural, the nature of the use. I mean, you can agree with there, you can disagree with, but ultimately what it does is converts the sun's energy into electricity, just like corn, soybeans convert to sun.
Doesn't look like it.
So they're all behind it, um, will it look different? It'll look different, but it'll, it, it's not necessarily bad, it's quiet, low impact use.
Want to be some noise with the mega, when those are, when your panels are shifting. I've, I've been employed for the last twenty years as a electrical type engineer. At Bethlehem Steel, the ISG, and now moving on forward to Cleveland Cliffs, there's going to be some hum. There would have to be.
Only on the burners and the burners are buried in the project to the extent to when it converts from DC to AC.
How close?
Those are on the inside of the project.
How close can they put panels, put panels to a residential property?
We have someone from the planning commission to answer that, it's the exact ordinance here. Uh, there's also a noise limit in the ordinance, fifty-five decibels in the property line. Uh, and I believe the setback distance is a hundred feet from the center line of any road. Uh, and two hundred feet from the foundation of the wall.
So.
And, so you won't hear it, fifty-five decibels.
Two hundred feet from the, from the foundation of my home, not where my property line is?
Yes, but the sound is at fifty-five property line.
Well, I mean, obviously it has to be on their side of the line, right?
Correct.
Well, no, you can still see it, sure.
And when they turn, you know, they're, they move, right, they, they follow the sun, is that correct?
They are trackers.
So, I mean, I, I've, because we're looking at how impactful this is going to be, we're concerned too, and I'm sure that people will be too, that are near it. As they turn, there can be blinding glares to.
No, that's.
Depending on the.
There's two types of panels.
I've read it, I'm not making it up, so I don't know if it's not true.
But there's panels that, that refract light and, and, and direct it to increase heat. That either use molten salt or, or water to create steam and then energy. These actually are designed not to reflect, because reflecting wastes the energy that is converting to electrons. So, uh, they're glare resistant, uh, and they actually keep it, they tilt, they do tilt. Uh, that full tilt, they're, you know, about. Eleven to twelve feet at full tilt, and general average, they're about seven and a half feet high, so let's see what it is.
I have a question, uh, I had heard that they've got it, uh, on two other projects that they're looking into with Stark County.
Two other companies are looking to do solar projects in the.
Is there going to be a limitation?
Depends on is the need to rezone anything, really?
There's practical limitations based on the grid capacity.
Well, yeah. And as far as, as far as what they can do in their proposed projects.
And one of the questions that was asked, you know, was, you know, could you change your mind later? But you, you can't change your mind later once they install, right, once they install one, but if, you know, and this is a question a lot of people have asked, well, let's say. You know, we, we get to forty percent, you know, let's say that, that there's a great deal of growth. The zoning could be changed to discourage additional, you know, additional installations at that point. And I'm not saying they would or they wouldn't, but you got to remember that these, these things are all available for the public to, you know. To seek changes in, and if it got to the point where people felt like the community was getting saturated with these, I think. It is, in, under the current legal format, local people could do that. Now, this is, the state government could pass something that would not allow that. And that's, that's possible too.
Probable, from what I hear.
Less likely if we all work together.
Right.
Well, they're, they're not as clear, we, we can't see the future, you know.
You know, you haven't done your research either.
What do you mean? Why do you say that? You know, researching doesn't mean you always know the answer when you get there, if you say you do, you're making it up. Okay, I'm not going to make it up, I'm saying where I don't have completely clear answers, I'm going to share that with everybody, I'm not going to say I do.
Somebody has to come up with, uh, something for Stark County saying, we're not going to add any more than this amount of acreage. And who's to stop, who's to stop anybody from putting up windmills in the future? I know that these, this wind, uh, people are talking, they have no, nothing to do with wind farms, he said nothing. Well, what if somebody else comes in, it's ag land, okay? Oh, but you see, that all, it, it all starts, it all started for this, didn't it? And a lot of people, like this gentleman, this couple up in front, they didn't know about it, you didn't know about it.
Yeah.
Uh, and you can say you put it in the newspaper, something like that, some people won't read the newspapers out here. Was something mailed to you, that would be the key thing, I think. As the, uh, the homeowner, the, the property owner, was anything mailed to these?
No.
I mean, that's what we're talking about. There's got to be some type of, of limitation on this stuff, and why Stark County? Has Marshall County got any, uh, solar, uh, projects in plan? I, I don't know, does anybody know that? But why not? Why don't they have, why is it Stark County that has, why is it right next to Bass Lake? There's so much area around here. I don't understand that.
Next to the power lines.
Yeah, but there's power lines out further, they don't have to go right next to Bass Lake. That is, that is not a good excuse.
Why so fast? Why so much so quickly?
Limitation, so there has to be limitation now.
I don't know, I don't know if quickly applies here, this started before I took office.
So take, uh, take fifty acres and stop there and see how that goes, see how that works.
Fifty acres isn't enough to make them any money, they need more. Fifty acres are throwing their money away.
You're right.
If you're going to do it, you need to, you need to return on your investment.
And then sitting there quietly. Okay, so are there any comments from the side of the room?
But I, I do think that, um, I would like to please sit down and meet with everybody too, I mean, I, everybody else has their agenda here, but for us, this is impactful to us. We weren't informed, even though you didn't approve the zoning of that parcel that is on two-ten. We are neighbors and we did not get the notification, we should have gotten the notification, so we could have come to that meeting, we would. I think feel a little better about everything if we, and again, it was behind us, so this is impactful, I, I like to see.
Well, Julie, there was something with, when you looked up their property, there wasn't no names or something on the property.
Well, railers didn't get off either. Yeah, but again, it's all at the recorder's office, you have that recorded, right? She's, you want to verify.
I, I'm the one that owns the property of the pond, it's in my personal name.
Wasn't another like to, I don't know, like an LLC?
That's the farm.
And then the one that's in between you guys, so that makes you not connected or something, that's what families explain to me today.
We're connected, we're right next to that, that white line is our bound, or her bound, I mean, it's, we're all a partnership.
This is not a current feature.
Next one to the left of the pond, right there.
That's, this is not, that, this big piece right here, this is an old map, so this big piece is actually broken up into different parts.
Yeah.
Right now, so this is not current.
So there's some kind of buffer in between you, because these people got it, there, there's some kind of buffer or something.
So we're not dealing with that information, so we have an old map. And, you know, it is something.
This map is old, but. Just this particular one is old on this computer.
We can look at it, showing them what she's talking about.
Yeah, no, I mean, but we're, we're right next to that, so I'm, we're, so I mean, I'm just, you know, businesses shouldn't impact other businesses. And their ability to be successful, or, I mean, we should have been notified, anyway, I, I'd love to sit and talk to everybody. Yeah, thank you, no, and I appreciate that, and when I found out through, you know, social media. Yeah, no, and I appreciate it, I do, and thank you for. I, I'd like to talk about how it's going to impact if you want thirty-five. Looking at a few of solar panels as opposed to agricultural land. But weddings events, because they're not looking at a nice landscape anymore, it's not agricultural. Everybody's saying industrial, well, it's a power plant, it's, it's a solar farm, it's not a farm. So, it'll, and again, I'd love to sit and talk to everybody, but we didn't know that this was happening until after the meeting occurred, because we weren't notified.
Ma'am, it's not good to help, just, just like you interject something, the, um, the zoning. The plan, you know, the, that's, that's normally the plan commission, this, this is coming in front of the commissioners today. Just because it's, it's just an amendment to the zoning map. And so that comes actually in front of the, uh, commissioners, but if, if you, I think it's fair to say, if you have, you know. You know, concerns about the actual zoning, you know, the plan, county, uh, plan that plays normally, you would go with the plan commission. You see what I'm saying? Oh, you sure you do, they have public meetings. Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, the meeting would be here, but it's a different board. Yeah.
Can I have a twenty seconds?
Sure.
Um, I've just been sitting here, uh, being quiet, I'm in a shop, I actually work with your solar as well. I'm a resident down in Danville, Indiana. I'm actually one of the developers to offer some other projects in this area, so I wanted, I, I will be a feature in every one of you, my business card. Even if I'm not working with you, I'll be more than happy to answer any question, all questions you have regarding solar. Um, and share some additional information for you as well, uh, but I've been in the industry for fourteen years. All of the points that you all are bringing up are certainly valid, and, uh, I would like to do my part and help answer any question. Question about candles as well, uh, anyway, I can help, uh, I'll be doing my business card, I come up here on a weekly basis. I'd be more than happy to come here and, and talk more about solar. I just wanted to help with that.
None of these listed are between two-ten and.
No, they're all south of.
Oh, that's right, I went through all the descriptions, okay, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
We take action. So, we, this is just to accept.
You can approve, approve, you can didn't, you can reject. Uh, and, uh, you can take no action, which point it would be just accepted, it would be accepted in ninety days from the date of their, of the plan commission's action. I mean, it, it doesn't list it, but, uh, if, if, you know, I think you have the inherent authority to send it back, you know, we could find out if that's true or not, but I'll, I've never had anybody want to do that. The statute doesn't say it specifically. It says that you can accept or reject.
Well, I'll make a motion to accept the rent contribution. Parcel seven five dash one zero dash two three dash one zero zero dash zero zero eight, uh, zero 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 dash zero zero two. I'll second that. All the favor. Okay, that's, that's one of them.
Which one?
That's, uh, okay, now. There's four items listed south for south of ten. Oh, that way. The two running to the north along thirty five there, is that?
This is for, so the next three is this right here.
Yeah.
This, this needs to.
It's a big run all the way up most of Winnemaw.
But it's not there.
Oh, it's not on there.
So the southern two, which, which two are the southern two properties on this? Well, which parcel? Which, yeah.
Can you read that number? I can't read this.
No, it's.
Look behind you.
Oh. Nineteen.
And then the other one is that.
Twenty one dot three hundred.
And then you have this piece.
Pretty close to away.
This piece without the northern section. Not this.
Wouldn't it be possible to change something so there would be a, a mile or two miles or whatever buffer between this kind of a development and residential, AKA the, um, you know, the city of Knox, I mean, Bass Lake.
Without going through a multi-month process to amend the solar ordinance.
Cause I think if you had a larger buffer, I mean.
Who would be to do it?
Yeah, I mean, what, what is it? Um, the lake, I believe, I read pays fifty one percent of the taxes in Stark County. I read that. I don't know if it's true. All right, I mean, so I mean, we are, I don't want to call it tax law, but I mean, we simply say are fair. If you had a, a one mile or two mile or something buffer.
We actually only have about a half a mile buffer right now. That's about it.
Well, it should be more.
It's only, it should have been, but.
I mean, I've got ninety five years in this house.
People that came, they didn't even know what was going on. Most of the people at the lake had no clue that this was going on.
Well, and then you're, then you're accomplishing, you're, you're saving, you know, where I think, again, where you have your, your lake, you know, people are, people are tearing down houses and building three million dollar homes on this lake, and that's gonna generate a lot more revenue. You have sporties is selling, I mean, you have the marinas for sale. I mean, there's potential for, I mean, from business owners looking at, like, the, the lake is going through transformation right now. People are, are looking at.
Farms right behind the, uh, uh, the Bass Lake beach.
Yeah, we, and we worked on that.
It would be a great balance then. I mean, we understand that.
But it's still only a half a mile.
Well, it'd be nice to think it'd be a mile or two.
I don't know what this is on the other side of thirty five from the lake. That chunk of land. I don't know if that's a half mile.
Probably closer to a quarter. I would love a half mile more than two hundred foot from the foundation of my house.
You don't really measure it.
We can guess. Sounds pretty cool.
We don't know what the long-term effects of this is. I ask people about this. And it's like crickets in the moon. Because nobody knows twenty five years from now, what these solar panels will do to us. We have no idea. I mean physically to us.
And does it lock it down for thirty years?
Change our DNA is what I'm saying. I wouldn't expect anything like that. But we don't know what it's going to do to the soil, to, we don't know what it's going to do to the weather, to be honest with you, because there's a heat shield that develops over these panels. It does warm up.
That's not true.
Not true?
Not true. I've read it in several different places. A five to seven degree. Now during, during the night, it's not a problem. And during the day, if there's enough wind, it blows it through. But there's still a heat shield that will develop over these panels. We already have enough problems with the lake getting, uh, getting rain clouds to come out there. I don't know what this would do to our, our patterns of, of, uh, cause this is a huge farm. Huge. We don't know that. That's why I say you need to be careful about how many of these things you have out there. Limit it. You've got the, the ability to do it with, with the laws and changing those things on the, uh, the county's solar farm. Uh, what is it?
So, so what should I tell you? You can't do with your property.
I understand that, but you know what? You can't. I can't put a, I can't put a gas station to my property. I can't put a, a, a.
I mean, cause that's, cause that's the big question in my mind. I mean, I don't like telling people what they can and can't.
And I totally agree with you, but where do you stop it? I mean, uh, Stark County is not a very rich county, let's face it. I have this feeling, we're being taken advantage by these solar parks. That's what I think. But I mean, and you're right, you're absolutely right. It is a tough thing to tell people, and that's why I'm not trying to.
Yeah, that's why I'm still sitting here mulling it over.
Yeah, I know. I'm not against the solar farm, okay? I know what's, it's going to happen and, and that's fine. But in the same respect, we don't know in the future what these things are gonna do, and we don't.
Well, and again, and protect all these investments and taxpayers that are developing at the lake and, and investing into like, we are, you know, into building new businesses and, and you have, again, we're seeing a big transformation happening out there where people are tearing down houses and building multimillion dollar homes and these restaurants are getting purchased and, you know, there's, there's gonna be more taxes. It'd be great for you to have your cake and eat it too.
It would be, it would be.
But if you can give up that land for thirty years.
So I have, um, a question to the representative from the developer. Sure. If we deny this rezoning, what impact does that have on your project?
On the project, uh, it, it ultimately eliminates buffering along thirty five. It wouldn't be fair to say that the project won't occur. It's, it's one hundred percent going to occur. Uh, but it will be a big impact on, on these, these farming operations here on the current owner that uh, purchased this farm and it will continue to be farmed and all of the, uh, uses that go along farming will continue. There'll be manure spread on that farm. It'll be all of those things that happen in this swamp. The solar project will not have that. It'll be quiet. It'll be screened. It'll be buffered along that road. Um, I would ultimately say that it would be a better use and it would be better for the neighbors. But it's, but that's, that's what happens.
Gentlemen, you don't have to decide today either.
Well, I'd like to.
You know, you, you have ninety days to decide essentially.
Right.
That's what, it's actually baked into the statute now, how far you're into it. Uh, you know, like, what, how far are we into it maybe now? Like twenty days, something like that. How long, was the thirteenth? So it's about twenty days ago, right?
Sure.
You have, you have ninety days from the, from the thirteenth of September to decide.
Can down to the next meeting.
I guess I have a question. It's, I mean, I understand that many people just don't want it to be there.
Yeah.
But if we're talking about the distance of where we want the buffering to occur, I mean, that's something that we could commit to along thirty five. I mean, this is what our initial request was limited. You know, on the other side of the US highway. So that's certainly something that we're open to discussing. No, discussing right here at the meeting.
So why do you buffer, like, your, your house being surrounded with a?
The house is nowhere near this site. I just wanted to be clear about you about this parcel here.
Yeah, let's not worry about my house. Yeah, it's not worth it. That'd be, that'd be too much sense. Are you an attorney or what's your background? Speaking like a geologist and also an engineer at times.
Could we possibly talk to the solar company about making maybe a two-mile buffer around residential?
It's not gonna be that big.
Well, a mile. I mean, I'm not saying that it's open big, you know, but.
I'd motion to fifty feet from the foundation of my house.
I'm making a motion to approve. The parcel's listed in the application for red one. Seven five, one zero, two three, four zero, one nine dot zero 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 dash zero zero two. Seven five, one zero two three, five zero zero, one two dot one hundred dash zero zero two. Seven five, one zero two three, four zero zero, zero one three, uh, two zero zero, zero zero two. And seven five, one zero two three, four zero zero, zero two one, that three zero zero dash zero zero two.
And Commissioner Gerler, if I, if I might, I interjected on seven five, one oh, two three, five zero zero, zero one two dot one zero zero dash zero zero two. It's the portion line south of US thirty five. Because that, that parcel actually includes some land that's north of thirty five. Okay.
Yes.
Be clear on this.
Yes, I, I saw him in my motion to clarify that, uh, one zero zero, zero two. Uh, be limited to the portion line south of US thirty five. Motion. No second. Can I make a motion? We table this till our uh, what date is that? Next meeting?
Eighteen.
Uh, October eighteen?
Nine thirty AM.
I'll second that.
So we could, it's been tabled until September.
October.
October eighteen, nine thirty AM.
Yes, and, yeah, right here. Question?
What was that ninety day timeline thing?
We have ninety days to make a decision on this from the time that it was submitted. Or, or it has approved.
Yeah.
Oh, it was just gonna get dragged out for ninety days.
Lots of numbers. Thank you.
Next up, we have Michelle Havran from Coons Lake.
Hello.
Good evening. Um, I appreciate your time. Um, I wanted to bring to the table, I live on Coons Lake on the southwest side of the lake. For about a couple of years, I've been contacting the DNR as well as yourselves to establish the water access that's deeded to the non-lakefront residents of that part of the lake. And what I'm asking for is to request that those accesses receive the actual markings of its boundaries and, um, signage that, you know, notes those as public accesses. Um, my access, it's directly on Dogwood. Um, the residents that live by it have abused it and used it as their own where they've gone to the point where they've yelled at our, the non-lakefront residents from walking down there. One of the residents on that location, um, they removed our public pier to extend their own pier as well as expanding jet skis where our pier was. Our neighborhood was gonna build a new pier, but we didn't have a chance because the residents that live on, on that, on our access. The access on Dogwood is actually the, the last existing access. The other three have been taken over by the residents that live closest to them, you know, grassed over, made part of their landscape and so forth. And so I was just coming to, to request some help um, with that. My next step was to, um, I contacted Indianapolis as far as what our rights were as far as, you know, getting those accesses corrected. And they said I would have to file a petition.
And what's intersection?
Circle.
With the, uh, National Resource Commission. So.
Okay, we're, we're trying to pull up a.
Well, that's fine.
Visual on this.
I can see. That's fine.
So, I've been out, I've been out there. I've taken a look at a couple of things. Um, I, I think this is, is this one or the one next to it is, uh, assigned no parking fire lane?
Yeah, and it has a no, uh, no parking, public access right below it. Um, my, my neighbors have been at the lake much longer than I. I've only been currently a resident since twenty seventeen. And they, I, you know, my neighbors have been there for thirty years and they said over the time, you know, over the years, you know, people closest to the other accesses, cause there are supposed to be four, there are Ash Street, um, Dogwood, Hickory and Maple, and those were just supposed to be deeded as water accesses to non-lakefront fam, you know, homes. And, um, they just really uh, took over, you know, seeded over, made it look part of their house. And so nobody walks there because there's no signage there. The one on Hickory, which is closest to the Marina, has actually been blocked by trees and as well as the Marina owner who is now selling utilized part of the property to, you know, where people would walk to get to the water, park their boats there. So so that's kind of where I'm at, is this is my last step before I need to go through the commission to see what, what my next step is. So, and it, you know, it's about, you know, it, that was a big reason why I bought the house and I, I love, I love it out there. It's just the best place and you know, to have that water access was really appeasing, you know? I didn't have to live on the lake, but to have access to it was, was a good seller and I don't want to devalue my own home as well as my neighbors without being able to use those because of the people living next door telling us we can't go down there or be, be on that property.
All right, what can you do?
Well, uh, the, what you can do, the, the typical policy on these has been, and this comes up frequently. Uh, you know, this is Simpson and Frost addition, correct? Ma'am? Simpson and Frost, you're in Simpson and Frost addition?
I, I believe so. I'm on Dogwood.
Yeah, you're on Dogwood Street. I think you're, and, and you're referencing the, uh, property that's the Coons Lake, it's on the GIS. You can maybe highlight that, Rachel, if you would, so people could see what, what we're talking about. That, that's the, uh, area that's part of the subdivision as Coons Lake Park Beach Access, part of Simpson and Frost. And then the, the access to that is through this, uh, portion, is this little, uh, alley, you know, essentially strip that goes, um, it follows the pathway of Dogwood basically back out to the water, right?
Correct, yes, as well as the other.
What, what's, you know, mostly that has been treated as a private matter to be sorted out by. Mostly that has been treated as a private matter to be sorted out by the property owners. Uh, there has been action by the commissioners in the past. When someone is, is blocking like parking vehicles in one of these to put up a no parking sign because. Uh, in my opinion, the county can, uh, keep people from parking, but impeding people's access to the waterfront. Now, uh, unfortunately, I, you know, what can solve your problem with peers? Uh, if someone finds a, a cure for that endless source of conflict, it would be a really great thing. Um, it seemed to always cause that kind of conflict. Now, uh. One thing the county can do and has occasionally done, I believe, is, um, is actually. Uh. Prohibit any placement of a pier. However, I don't think it applies in this case because that applies where the county has an easement. That runs to the water's edge. And here what we have is, I think, a public dedication. Because I think I've read that public dedication, Simpsons and Frost is an explicit public.
It's a conservative part way of the plot.
Right, right. And it says, and they, oh, but there's also documents filed that say it's a public, it, it, they specify to the public. Not just to back. Right, exactly. So, uh, so I think, you know, and I say that because these, these aren't all the same, that each one has its own history. Um, this, the history of this one is that it's a public dedication. And, and so, um. What's, what's the answer there? What, what do you want to have done?
Well, like I said, I, I think it would be nice to have those accesses. You know, marked as, as that, as public accesses with no parking. Um, you know, currently it on Dogwood and it's probably, I mean, besides the one by the marina on Hickory. You know, it's abused the most with the owner and, and obviously the business owner parking vehicles there. I mean, there has to be some partition or some marker of some sort that says, well, you can't be parking your large boat. Here, you know, because according, I know this, the GIS is always usually skewed.
Oh, sure, sure. I, right, understood. You can't count on those lines being exactly the right place. There isn't a fact that there is a, in fact, a non-deeded portion that had, that goes between Circle Avenue. And the, uh, of, you know, the Simpson and Frost public dedication on the front. So, yeah, that, that is something that the commissioners have in the past done, post no parking signs and try to, you know, keep people from, from. Blocking the way across that.
Right, right. And, and I understand people accessing peers because I know they go on either side. You know, and I guess that's what I'm looking, you know, I have been in contact with the DNR as far as the, the homeowner with the pier. Because he does violate DNR repairing rights as far as how he's extended his pier. Because where the public pier was, where we were gonna actually. Um, replace ours with the new one, we didn't get that chance because he was too busy expanding his own. So, you know, that's, yes, that's where I'm at is where I want, you know, I, I'd like, if, if possible, to get more signage. And the boundary, the, the boundaries to be marked as they are. Now, I, I'm curious, as you were saying that, I understand the front easement. Is owned by the county. But per the deed or per that dedication of rights, it said straight to the water. And it did, you know, mention in there about not building or erecting anything. Along those lines of those accesses. Does that not still hold true or?
I, I don't know. I don't know that, those specific things you just said. I don't, I don't have an opinion on where, whether I can't say I've seen that exactly. Uh, normally, uh, there has been a policy that, uh, when you have these kind of. Things that the county can intercede and, uh, and put no parking signs up, just like you, you, you know, the county can, I mean, normally. Without any other action, there's no rule against parking at the side of the county road, for example.
Sure.
Uh, and, but if, if the county wants to say no parking there, they can say no parking and then they can enforce that. And I think this is a similar situation and that's about as far as it goes.
And, and given how that area right along the lake there is deeded.
It, it is actually a, it's a dedication in the plat to the public.
So therefore I don't want to make any specific. Rules or anything guidance, whatever you want to call it, about peers.
Yeah.
Because.
Well, that's.
Why I hear, from what, from what I got from you, what, I can say they're prohibited. But as far as I can have what pier there, since it's all one big community area.
Right, I, I won't even go so far. These are all different. If you have a situation where a county road, this happened. Where a county road goes all the way down to the water's edge, then the county can clearly say, nobody can put a pier there.
Yeah.
Okay, but now this isn't that situation.
Right.
This isn't a county right of way.
So I can't even say that.
It's a public dedication. You may be the trustee for that public dedication, but this, even this, it's up there states. This would be a very clear thing, but in Indiana, the law on it isn't as clear as that.
Okay.
I, you know, uh, so it's a tough one. The DNR has some authority over, but they're also hesitant to exercise.
Okay.
Right, they won't, they won't say anything about your easement, but when it comes to the repairing rights, they will address the, the man, the homeowner. Who's encroached with, you know, with going against those regulations. You know, it's one step at a time, I guess, to help him understand he can't. I guess that's where I'm, I have a little trouble is that. From what I understood through this plat, that it went straight to the water and they couldn't erect a pier. You know, within however long it, if it's twenty-five feet, that within that twenty-five feet of that public es, access, they couldn't put the pier there. Then, once they put a pier in, then they had to follow the DNR, you know, repairing rates. And, you know, that's what I was to understand.
Yes, sir.
And what's happened there is, is the adjoining landowners on the lake. Built piers out and then put, uh, frontage that actually comes into that easement. Actually act as a block. And on that stretch of, of land, there's five easements and only two have no parking signs. The rest have been removed.
Yeah, it didn't look, look like there were only three marked anyway.
Yeah, yeah. At one point back in the eighties, you marked all, but since then, the signs have slowly disappeared.
Okay.
Yes, I heard that as well.
Yeah, I think, I think we've got an action item for you.
That's what it sounds like.
Yeah, look into where to put no parking signs along those.
There are more and more people putting.
And then.
Property and, uh.
Yeah, and then as far as, as far as that stretch along the beach. I think it's, it's something that you, you know, the neighbors along there should be able to work out. If not, if anything, through the, the Coons Lake Homeowners Association. Because as Marty said, we can't, since it's not. Our property per se, it's the community's property. We can't just go in and say, this is what you can and cannot do in this little spot on this stretch of beach, you know?
I guess my only thing is, I've tried to work with, you know, I, I am a member of the, the Coons Lake Association. They don't really address issues like that. Um, they want you to just go and talk to everybody, like we're all friends and.
Yeah, it'd be nice if we were.
You know, sad reality, we're not, we're all not friends. So, so being that said, you know, I, I'm just more. I work for a park district, so I understand public land and I understand that doesn't, that's not owned by me. That's owned by everyone. And I totally understand that and I understand the easement. But I guess the, the biggest problem I have is that that plat addresses what those non-lakefront residents were to get. You know, with that land or having a home in that area that they would. Not have to be confronted by someone to say, hey, get off of there when it's not even theirs. So. But yeah, so that's what I'm looking for. I'm looking for assistance with signage and the marking of what. You know, what's theirs and what's those easements or those accesses.
Well, we can get, we will have the highway department refresh the signs up on those easements.
I appreciate that.
You want to say no parking?
No parking, public access. I mean, it is public, which is fair to say.
Yeah, we just think of signs on there now. Yeah.
Yeah.
The one says, uh, no parking, the other one says public access.
Right. I mean, if it's set it to me, if there's two there.
Worn, worn out signs. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Well, it's okay. No, one looks really tired. So, yeah, I understand that. I mean, if there could at least be two at each access, which it would show you what. The actual length of the accesses. So maybe that would be helpful if there's one on the left, one on the right that says, you know.
One problem, that's where the, like, point property, point lines are.
Yeah, right.
What, you know, if they're not marked.
Yeah.
You're not gonna, you don't want to put on somebody else's.
Right.
Right, because one, you know.
It's always the trick, isn't it? You want to mark it in the right place.
Yeah, I know when we dealt with that up best, like I think Bill Crease helped us, you know.
There may be some monuments out there you can find. There are, most of those places have been surveyed in civilian ties, so.
I have talked with Mr.
Work with the, well. Can we tell him to go work with Bill to make sure they get put in the right.
Well, I think he's still, uh, okay.
Not yet.
Yeah, I still think he's out of the office, but I know he's surveyed that before in the past. He has.
There might be something there. I don't think. Now, just, just before you put them out there, make sure we're good to go with the placement of the signs.
Okay.
All right. All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good luck with your solar panel project.
I mean, you're right.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Have a good night. Uh, Bernardette, you're up next.
Do you want me to come up there?
Please.
You can.
Can't see you so well when you're all the way back in the church with yours.
Sometimes that's the best. Um, I'm assuming that, uh, Mr. Lucas emailed you guys, uh, the, uh, order.
Yeah.
And do you guys have any questions on the order?
Um. This is it, and then we do this and then you make.
It allows, allows me to start making changes. Oh, drafting changes, not making changes, just drafting.
Okay.
I'm not going to submit anything to the state until we sit down and have a conversation, um, look over everything.
I'll, uh. Motion to approve the order, delegating precinct battery establishment and authority to the election board. I'll second that. All those in favor, aye?
Don't you have anything more difficult? Don't you have anything more difficult?
No.
I heard this.
The Senate, the Senate one I got today.
Okay.
Um, go over a few things with you. Our population actually only increased by eight people from two thousand and ten to twenty. Um, we're at twenty-three thousand, three hundred and seventy-one. Um, I got the top, uh, population of the townships if you want to hear them. Um, California has two thousand, one hundred and sixty-five. Center Township has six thousand, one hundred and thirty-one. Davis has one thousand and two. Jackson is five eighty-five. North Bend is at fifteen oh four. Oregon is three thousand, two hundred and twenty. Railroad is one thousand, two hundred and eleven. Washington Township is two thousand, nine hundred and forty-four and Wayne Township is four thousand, six hundred and nine.
So what, uh. What lines are we redrawing?
Um. Town, uh, precincts. I don't think we have to reprecinct anything. Um, I was worried about the Senate. But I got the Senate lines in today and we are, are under one Senate. Because in previous years, we've had two senators, US or state senators. Um, that's no longer is, uh, Mr. Charbonneau is no longer a senator in, um, Stark County. Uh, Mr. Mike Bahatchuk is our only senator that Stark County has. Um. Representative changes, uh, District sixteen, uh, holds now Railroad, Wayne, California. North Bend, Washington two, Washington two and Center Township. All those are under Doug Gootwin. Um, the biggest change is Center, Center Township was held by Mr. Jim Presle. Um. District twenty, which is what Presle has, only has Davis, Oregon, Jackson and Washington one now.
Okay.
So mostly, uh, Stark County went greatly to, um, District sixteen over twenty.
Yeah.
But. Um. The district to get county council seats has to be redrawn. Um, you're supposed to be within ten percent of, of the overall population. Um, the numbers that I ran, um, there's also a study out by. I don't remember the name of the university, but, uh, it says that we're over. That's what made me go look at my number, look at the numbers. And we are over by twenty-five percent.
That's from one district to the next.
And so those have to be corrected. Um, what I think may have happened, they may have used registered voter numbers. Because if you divide out the registered number, voters use those instead of the population. It actually comes in under ten percent, but that's not the equation for. Council district seats. You can't use registered voters. It's overall general population.
Okay.
So we will start working on that since I have the Senate lines. Now I don't have to worry about that. I can work on. The districts now.
Anything else?
That's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the payroll claims in the amount of two hundred and sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and forty-two dollars and eighty-two cents? So moved. I'll second all those in favor. Aye. Motion to approve the vendor claims in the amount of three hundred and eighty-seven thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars and. Twenty-five cents. So moved. I'll second all those in favor. Motion to approve the minutes from Monday, September twentieth, twenty twenty-one. I'll second all those in favor. Aye. We have to talk a little bit about the E M S position, the director.
Well, we opened it up, posted the position last week. Tuesday or Wednesday. I have four applications and I just want to know how long you want me to keep it up.
Trans, since last day was what?
It's November first, but.
So I want to. Have, it'd be nice to have for the, for the outgoing and the incoming to have some face time. Uh, before our next meeting? Well, within the next. Let me see, I gotta go to my other calendar, because this doesn't have. One meter, good. Yeah, anything within, between now and the end of the month. Just a week before. If you want to do it before our next meeting, that'd be cool, too. Well, we need at least a week. Right, that's what I'm saying. Yeah. Well.
Do you want me to leave the application open till the, this Friday? You guys hold the interviews next week and then you can appoint them on the eighteenth.
I like some of that. That'll work.
Is there any certain day next week where you want me to do your executive session?
Oh, there are. I have things. To the day after, wait, no. So, the fourteenth is something. I think I have something the fifteenth to do.
Monday or Tuesday next week? Do you have anything open? Do you have Monday or Tuesday? The eleventh and twelfth.
Eleven, are we open for Columbus Day?
Yes, we are. I'll go ahead and sneak that into the next year's holidays, though.
The twelfth ahead of the state.
Yes.
What time is that?
Uh, well, tend to be nine o'clock. So do you want to possibly do like, just start it right after?
It's good. That'd be cool. Yeah, that works for me. Yeah, that works for me. Is that alright? That works for me.
I'll try to work it out for October twelfth, starting around ten thirty, because state board said they may need an hour and a half with us. Yeah, October twelfth. Yeah, uh, yeah, nine o'clock.
Okay.
Tentatively.
Yeah. Okay, that'll work. Works for me. Yeah. No, no, this wasn't enough. Marty, I.
No.
Rachel.
No. Did, wait, did you miss me at the last meeting? I just got it up.
I wasn't in, so I didn't. We got along. Anyone else have any for us? So moved. Second. Okay.
I'm Jill.